And Greg is with me tonight. And so I think we already have one person that was waiting for us and that is on. And we'll wait for others to come on as well. And so you want to say hi?
Hello, everyone.
So we're gonna have, oh, we've got two peoples on now. And so you guys get to see us in our winter hats. Hello, Jan, how are you? And so I am in my little beanie and Greg is in his baseball cap. It is cold in the country and on the ranch. Hey, are y'all seeing us okay? Type a little message. Are you seeing and hearing us okay? It's Jennifer. Hey, girl, how are you? How are you in Dalton? So, so cute. Oh, good, we look cute with our hats, Jan says.
Of course.
And so y'all can hear us fine? You can see and hear fine. Awesome, it's not pixelated. You see, yes, see you, okay, praise God, that doesn't always happen. So a lot of these people have been going through the whole process of the discernment. Some have come on, hey, Derek, woohoo, Evansville, Indiana. And Dalton and Jennifer from Going Beyond Their Good. And we got Lena on and we got Kimberly on. So we've got some great people that are, and Jan's already on. And so we got people from, oh, we got Teoli from Washington State. So we got people that come from all over and some people from Canada will come on. And Alberta, Canada, there we are. So guys, it's great to be with you again tonight. And those of you that are just jumping on, we're just kind of dialoguing before. Hey, Jose from Florida, it's great to see you. And so we, um, we are wearing, I'm wearing the beanie, Greg's wearing his baseball cap. It is wintry here in Colorado on the ranch. And we've got a vet from Iowa and we've got Gina from Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. We got Nancy from Saginaw, Michigan. We got people from all over, it's so awesome. So y'all get to see us more like winter and Greg is with me tonight. Because we are going to just dialogue, we're gonna give a good overview of, um, of, you know, the gift of discernment, what we've been talking about as we've been going through the chapters. And so, uh, so Jennifer says she likes our hats. So anyway, okay. I'm glad you do, isn't it cute? I got it from my hairstylist. All right, anyway. So, but we're gonna give a really good overview tonight on the gift of discernment. We're just gonna dialogue together as a couple. What it's been like for Greg and what it's like for us to maneuver as we talk about these different aspects of discernment, what that, what that's been like for him. Uh, and Greg really has discernment as well. I would say you, because we talk about discernment in different ways and we'll talk about that. But he really has a strong gift of wisdom. And so, um, you know, discernment is not just being sensitive in the spirit realm. It's like what we have talked about through this whole study and what each chapter in the book Discerning the Spirit Realm discusses. So you have an announcement you want to make as well?
Yeah, since we're getting close to the end here.
Of this study.
Of this study. If you have questions that you would like Rebecca to address and concerning the study, concerning the book and all of you that have watched all of the different, um, uh, times that she's done, different chapters in the book, you want to send an email and get your pen and paper ready. Info, I N F O at Christian Harvest I N T L dot org. So that's info at Christian Harvest I N T L dot org. And send your question to that address.
About this.
About this study.
Study on discernment.
You want to do that before Sunday at six Mountain Standard Time. So any, because that way we'll, we'll take them and get them together. And then Becca can address them whenever she does, uh, the, the final one on this study. But that address again is info at Christian Harvest I N T L dot org. If you want to send any questions in for Becca to address.
Yeah.
And, uh, we'll see if we can't do that next time.
Yeah, so next time that will be what we do is we answer specific questions about discernment. Cause I know we've been given a really long discussion over this now for almost two, two and a half months. And I know we took a couple of weeks off around Christmas and the holidays. But, um, anyway, so what Greg and I really wanted to do, and guys, I know in the, the chapters where I talk about discerning the demonic and territorial spirits, you know, I didn't give like full teachings on each of those, because whoa, that would take weeks to do. And it doesn't mean that we won't do that in the future. But you know, what we are doing in the study is trying to really give a good overview. And I did talk about some of them specifically one time. But, um, but a good overview of, of this teaching on discernment. So questions that you have, type them out for us. And that's what we will do next time is we will be sure to answer those questions for you next time. Now, I am teaching in Oklahoma next Thursday night at a women's event.
And Friday morning.
And Friday morning, yes. And so probably next week, what we will do was that's why we want to get your questions. Uh, we want to get those questions, uh, by Sunday. So that way I can record a time where I'm answering all those questions and, and where, um, you know, that way you're getting those answers. And then of course, the following weeks when I'm not on the road, obviously I'm still gonna come on live. But we wanted to get those answered for you next week and I'll record those answers for you where you can get those answers next Thursday night and then go back and watch them again. And so, hey, good evening, Kenna from Alabama. And we've got Millie from Santa Rosa, California. So it's just awesome, it's so much fun, you know, because nations sometimes will come on, sometimes we've had Spain on and Asia on and, and so it just depends. And so usually we have a lot of people from Texas on, but we need to be praying for everybody in Texas. You know, my mom, my cousin, my sister, uh, Greg's, um, uh, sister, oh, Kenna's from your church, awesome, welcome, Kenna. So, and so, uh, we, we usually have a lot more people on from Texas, but my cousin and your sister's there and then your parents are in Oklahoma. So they're on, a lot of people are in the midst of this snowstorm. So I'm so glad with YouTube, we can do these live and then people can come back and watch them when they can as well. And so you want to pray or you want me to?
You can.
Okay, so Lord, we just thank you, Father God, for each person that you have brought on tonight, for those that will watch this in the days ahead. Lord, I thank you that this teaching will empower each person that is listening, that you are awakening our discernment, you are causing us to understand about discernment. Lord, that you are causing us to, uh, pay attention to this gift of discernment. And that we are maturing and growing, uh, as we are functioning in this gift. And Holy Spirit, we just thank you that you will guide Greg and I tonight as we are just sharing from our hearts, sharing very practically as a good overview of this study. And Lord, we give you all the glory and honor and praise in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Amen. And so guys, literally, you know, this is kind of an overview. Greg and I are just gonna dialogue just really casually back, ooh, I'm sorry, guys, we have our table set up and we keep hitting our table and it shakes. We got someone from Florida too, come on, girl, where it's nice and warm. So anyway, but, so we're just, you know, gonna kind of overview even the chapter titles in the book and just discuss a little bit further between the two of us, you know, that will help empower you guys. But you know, when we started this study, gosh, two, two and a half months ago now, maybe three, I have to look back, we talked about discernment defined, right? And that is chapter one of the book. So what is discernment? Because, and so I'm gonna just read to you a scripture that we started off with and just review this just a little bit. Because when we talk about discernment, like I said earlier, lots of times we think, oh, it's feeling and sensing in the spirit realm. Yes, it is all of that, but it's also great wisdom. Did you know the whole book of Proverbs? When you look up that, that, the depth, the meaning of the word they used in Proverbs in the scripture, it literally means discernment and wisdom. So if you really want to grow in discernment, and it also means, uh, it's, it's discernment and wisdom to walk in dominion, I'm just saying. And so if you really want to even understand how to increase in discernment and wisdom and to walk in that dominion mandate that God has called us to walk in, get that book of Proverbs out. Greg and I have been reading the whole book of Proverbs together this month of February as I haven't been traveling and I've been home. Hello, New Zealand, we are so glad to have you, Lynn from New Zealand. And so I'm gonna read to you this, oh, we got Jamaica on as well, woohoo, Jamaica on, we need to go to the beach, I'm just saying, that is a word of the Lord, okay? And so, um, but 1 Corinthians 12, seven through 11. I'm gonna read to you this scripture and I'm reading from the New Living Translation. A spiritual gift, because remember discernment is a spiritual gifts. Hi, Wendy, I'm so glad to be able to do these teachings for you and pray that I'm glad it's blessing you. So a spiritual gift is given to each of us so we can help each other. Yeah. The, to one person, the Spirit gives the ability to give wise advice. To another, the same Spirit gives a, uh, gives a message of special knowledge. The same Spirit gives great faith to another and to someone else, the Spirit gives a gift of healing. He gives one person the power to perform miracles and another the ability to prophesy. He gives someone else the ability to discern whether a message is from the Spirit of God or from another spirit. Still, another person is given the ability to speak in unknown languages while another is given the ability to interpret what is being said. It is the one and only Spirit who distributes all of these gifts. He alone decides which gift each person should have. So here, when we're looking at this discernment, it is a gift. And some people, I've literally heard other leaders, and guys, if you go back to the beginning of this series, I talked about this, I have literally heard other leaders say discernment is not a spiritual gift. I beg to differ, yes, it is. It's listed as one of the nine gifts in this scripture. And so, and God is not a man that he would lie. And so, uh, and so it is one of the nine gifts that he has given us. And when we look at this Greek word, just at this foundational scripture, it's diakresis. And guys, this is a repeat, but it means the ability, this is a heavy word, it means the ability to judge or to decide, meaning we're able to judge the genuineness, the genuineness of gifts or that come from the Spirit and those that do not. And so there's this ability and, and we taught through that of, there's, we are to, we are to pray and ask the Lord, you know, and this is what I was telling you guys way back when at the beginning of this teaching. If you're sitting in a meeting or you're watching, and, and please hear me, I'm not being critical, but it's true, you're watching a media outlet or you're reading, uh, something that's been written by the world or you're even hearing someone teach and speak that's representing the Lord. And sometimes you begin, you begin to get a check in your spirit or a red flag, we've used that term a lot. Don't ignore that, ask the Lord why you're feeling that. And what's so important about this is when we do this, we gotta know we cannot be critical and judgmental, meaning we're judging someone harshly. You want to add to that I can tell?
Yeah, something, something about what she's saying, and this is true for people who have the gift of discernment, but also true for people who do not have the gift of discernment, is to listen to those who do. And for those who do have the gift of discernment, to listen to those who don't. This is why it says in the Bible that we're a body but many parts. And it also says that the fear of the Lord is be, is the beginning of wisdom. So when someone has the gift of discernment, that means discernment is high in their spiritual anatomy. So God has developed them in a way where they have that spiritual discernment to hear things. And what I tell Becca and even my daughters is sometimes those antennas are up all the time, okay? For those of us who may not have it as strong as they do, our antennas are typically down, we don't get it until after the fact. Now, part of the, the, the issue with that in the church is learning to run with one another in a way that blesses the kingdom of God, that doesn't come against the other person.
Right.
So when she says she's feeling something in discernment, she's not gonna stand up and say, this is what I'm feeling in discernment and this is what God's showing me.
Right.
She's gonna lean over to me and say, do you, am I thinking, am I sensing and I'm not sensing anything? And she says, do you sense this or feel this? And so then my response becomes, okay, well, let's see, yes, I, I, okay, when you say that, when you bring that gift of discernment into the mix, sometimes it leads to the other person responding with, okay, I can, I can see that, I understand what you're saying. Then from there, you take the action, is that prayer?
Right.
Or do you leave?
Remember, we even talked about in this teaching, I've told them, discernment sometimes is just for you as a point of intercession.
Right.
Right? And so you have to be able to ask the Lord. When you're discerning something, you use, you have the wisdom of those that are close to you, you don't make it a gossip session.
Right.
But like I would go to Greg first and say, are you sensing this, feeling this? And then I'm gonna ask the Holy Spirit, Lord, why am I feeling this? Why are you showing me this? And oftentimes it's just for intercessory purposes. We never want to use discernment as a gossip session.
Because sometimes what happens, whether it's discernment or healing or the gift of tongues or pick one, we automatically make the assumption as Christians that it's for everybody. It may not be for everybody. When she's discerning something, it may just be for her, but if she doesn't share it with me, or maybe she's with someone else, if she doesn't share it, then she's almost being disobedient to what God is telling her, because there's a reason that that person discerning is feeling that then.
That's right.
You know what I'm saying? They, if you feel that in a meeting, you're not feeling it out in the car. Uh, in fact, I can give you a very current example. We were cleaning out a closet today.
Oh, this happened today.
And there came a point where she was cleaning out and we did some spiritual cleaning of some stuff that deals with different spiritual issues. And she just said, I'm just feeling queasy, I don't, something doesn't feel good and my body's, and I said, fine, we're done for a little bit. So we just came out and sat down and rested for.
But we know enough, that was really my discernment. I said, Greg, there's something in here, I don't know what it is. And guys, this is my prayer room closet, but you know, we moved a year and a half ago and some things really kind of got thrown in real quickly in my closet. I was gone half the time, y'all were unpacking boxes. And so come to find out, some of my research books that we keep in a box out in the garage or really even the storage shed away from the house, they're for research, meaning, uh, you know, we pray for people in Deliverance Ministry, those of you that know me, we do strategic spiritual warfare prayer assignments and prayer journeys. So sometime, so there are some research books the Lord has allowed me to keep, but we keep them out of the house in its own little box, right? And we just speak the blood over it. I'm not telling you to go out and do that, we only do this when the Lord tells us. Well, lo and behold, some of those books somehow in the move, when things were unpacked in my prayer room, when I wasn't here, three of those books were there, because after I stepped away, there, there is something in here, I, I'm telling you. And so we, we had, we stepped out of the room, came back in, regrouped like about thirty minutes. And then why did I pull out? I mean, within like five minutes, uh, there are these books that had gotten put in a wrong, in a wrong box, and it was books about, uh, the occult practices, uh, that we need to have understanding of sometimes when we're praying for cities and regions that should have been in that other box. And so I had no idea. And so that's how sensitive that gift of discernment is for me, it doesn't overtake me, I just start to, when I'm around something that's witchcraft in nature, um, it, it, I start to feel nauseous, it just, I, or lightheaded. And it kind of took me off guard, because this is my prayer room closet, there shouldn't be anything like that in there.
And understand too about discernment, even regarding the book, when you're discerning the spirit realm, whether you're a young Christian or an old Christian, if you're just beginning to develop that gift, if you, you've dealt with it most of your Christian life, or you've just become a Christian, you don't jump to that sensitivity right away. So the, the best example I can come up with is if someone has the gift of healing, they're not gonna go up, or, or they shouldn't, they may. And my thinking, they shouldn't go up to the hospital and pray for all the terminally ill patients the first day that it's revealed to them that they have that gift. Can they? Sure, if God leads them to. But what I'm saying is develop that discernment gift. And even with Becca, it took years and time to develop that discernment gift. And God develops it as you go, but after you hit a point, and what I'm getting to is she felt that right away.
Right away.
And it, it became something that she sensed in her spirit and knew that it had to be something like that. And the reason I say that is some of us may be sitting somewhere and go, and I'm gonna be a little silly, deja vu, or this just seems weird and something's wrong. Well, that's that spirit of discernment, because nothing happens by coincidence, nothing. God does everything for a reason. But as you develop that, you can hone it in and really connect it to what's going on.
Right, right. And deja vu is not the right word.
Sorry.
That would be more prophetic.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, 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 been there, yeah, like you've seen it before and you're there, then you're in it, that's prophetic, deja vu is more of an occult term.
Oh, good.
There we go. So there we go, anyway. But we've got discernment defined, guys, it's wisdom, it's the ability to evaluate things, it's the ability to judge things. Uh, God says in the book of Proverbs that the wise are discerning in heart and they evaluate everything. And so this is why I pray the book, and this is why, that, let me say this, has, is empowering all of you who are reading this book, Discerning the Spirit Realm, and this teaching is empowering you. But then this is some reason why some leaders and pastors pull away from this gift and they just don't want to talk about it, because how do you pastor or lead someone based off impressions in the spirit versus concrete facts and evidence? And this is why we talk about in this, this book, The Gift of Discernment, that we learn how to hear His voice, dreams and visions and, and prophetic words, all of those things. But then I even unpack, we can see, we can hear, we can feel, that we can sense, like what happened today. That was, that was that sensing, that feeling, that impression that I get, um, when I'm around something that was occult in, um, in nature. And so, you know, and that's a great example for us to use, and so.
Well, but you didn't jump right into prayer.
No.
When that happened, because it wasn't your assignment, your discernment said, this is going on, we need to.
Yeah.
Pull back.
We need to pull back and then we, we came back in and there, lo and behold, one of the first things I picked up, Greg, look, here it is. And yes, there is smell, Jennifer. And so, um, I'm so glad, uh, Teoli, that this has really been helpful for you. A lot of people just don't teach this gift, but yes, smell can be used in discernment as well, all of these things. And so, you know, we learn how to hear His voice, and then when we learn how to hear His voice, which is all chapter two, the different ways that we can do this, we want to mature in it. And this is where we're talking about, you don't want to become critical, you don't want to become, you can judge something, evaluate something, have wisdom on something, discern, perceive something in the spirit, but you don't become critical towards that person or those people. Be, you ask the Lord how to handle the situation. Now, I talk about some difficult things in the book. What do you do when you discern if a leader's not in sin? Well, you know, how did I handle that situation when we were in it? What do you do when you're discerning this about other people? And so, yes, you're right, Joanne, smells can be sickening when you're discerning, when you're in, in the discernment area, smells can be, they can make, and you can smell like death or foul odors or sulfur, demons smell bad. I smell demons, I do, I do, they, this is why they're loving this teaching, somebody is, stop that, he's being redneck. Anyway, but those of you who are from New Zealand, redneck, that, that just means he's being a very southern person right now with what he just did, he's, he's trying to be funny. Okay, but we've got to mature, we've got to mature in our, how we handle discernment. This is why leaders, this is why pastors get hesitant, uh, they're all laughing at what you did, bah, 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 I'm just, I can't take them anywhere, guys, I'm just saying, I need more discernment, no, I'm teasing, teasing. So anyway, but this is why pastors and leaders will pull away, you know, from people, because they don't understand the gift. And so how we mature, how we release the information, how we intercede. So that chapter to me, even when Sid interviewed me, Sid Roth, and we were talking privately, he goes, I think that this part is some of the most crucial for, of the teaching of maturing in this discernment and learning how to operate in it and engaging the Holy Spirit to take the steps of wisdom with what you're discerning.
One of the wisest things I've ever seen Becca do is she received a, a dream that, that in her, when she had the dream, she wrote the dream down. At that time, we, uh, the process in the church was to submit it. She wrote the dream down and then she put down what she believed God was telling her about the dream concerning the church we were at. And what she did is she handed it to the pastor now, and let me, let me get to the end, so you understand what I'm saying. She gave it to the pastor, he took it and she let it go at that point.
Yeah.
So every week, she didn't go in and ask him, did you read my dream? Did you read the, what do you think? What do we need to do? What's going on? She let it go. We never talked to him about that dream or interpretation again. Now, the interesting part is some of the stuff in the dream played out in the church just as her dream had said with her interpretation.
And then the pastor came to me later and said, wow, God was obviously giving you discernment and prophetic revelation. And that's one of the chapters, discernment and prophecy work together. And then he said, I need you to sit down and I need you to tell me what you feel God is completely showing you in this. I, it was a year later, a year later. I want to answer this real quick before I forget. Yvette, she says, I've been smelling cigarette smoke in my home. Ev, I'm just gonna be honest, Yvette, I, you know, when I smell that odor in the spirit realm, it usually is a strong man of addiction, also known as bondage, uh, when you smell that. So I don't know if you need to pray through your apartment, uh, or your home, if it's an apartment or a home, I didn't ask, but, uh, pray through it. And if someone has lived there before you, if it's something that you've smelled since you've moved in there, or you're recently smelling, are there new neighbors that have moved in nearby? Or, you know, so that might be something, you know, Eddie and Alice Smith have a great book, Spiritual House Cleaning. And it's a great book to read about how to pray through your home, um, you know, um, when those things, when those things like that are happening. It could be just a demon trying to harass you, uh, as well. Some, sometimes they take, uh, sometime, and I'm not like making light of it, but they do, sometimes demons will just try to come in the atmosphere and they'll try to intimidate you. So, yeah.
And the point being about that too, is when you do receive discernment and you feel the, the Holy Spirit giving you discernment, release it to someone or talk with someone that you're accountable to, that you're in relationship with, whether it be a spouse or be a pastor, be a church leader, home group leader. Once you give it to them, once you've, you've given them the discernment, because that comes with submitting to authority and submitting it to the person that you're in relationship with, then a lot of times you just let it go. Now, Becca, sometimes that will happen with her, she may pray about it in her prayer closet, but she may not unless that leader comes to her and says, hey, you gave us this discerning word about this. Because what that does is creates a relationship where that leader, pastor, home group leader, elder, whatever, begins to look at you for that discernment. Does that make sense? Sometimes discernment gets so out of whack and so leaders tend to not want it, because it can be so forceful and pushy. And then people who have the gift of discernment don't want to present it and they get all balled up inside, for lack of a better term, and they're not able to release the gift that God's given them to release. And that's why I think chapter two is so important to understand how to function in a way that's beneficial to the entire body of Christ.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so that chapter, guys, in the book, go back and, and reread it. I want to say something else to Yvette real quick, because she said she's been smelling that, that cigarette smell since she had COVID. Um, I, I'm just gonna tell you, Yvette, there are some people that I know that have had COVID, um, you know, praise God, you're healed, praise God, you got through it. So that could be something lingering from COVID. Uh, but sometimes people have said that they felt like when they had COVID, they were in a spiritual battle and that they had to literally take authority over that sickness or that illness. So you might even just say, I take authority over any, and I'm not saying you're demonized, but over any demonic spirit that was attached to this COVID. Not everyone that has had it has had to do this, but I've had so many people email me saying, Becca, it was like I felt this demonic oppression when I had it and I had to rise up and start taking authority over it. And then they started getting healed and they got better, but not, that's not the case with everyone. And so, um, I, you know, I'm just saying, Yvette, that might be something, you know, that you just pray, just to be thorough, right, out loud, right? And so, but we've talked just a little bit and reviewed just a little bit how discern- And so, but we've talked just a little bit and reviewed just a little bit how discernment and prophecy work together. There's a whole chapter on that where I give example after example. Because discernment and prophecy are both revelatory gifts, words of knowledge, words of wisdom. Those are all revelatory gifts, so oftentimes they will work together. And so, you know, there are many times when I'm praying for an individual. Or I'm, I'm praying for a city or a region, and I will begin to sense or feel things. You know, um, in the spirit, um, about where that person might need deliverance. Um, uh, you know, many times that will happen. Um, or, you know, in my prophetic gift, uh, things play out. In my spirit man, kind of like a, a movie reel, I don't know how else to say it. Sometimes when I lay hands on people, or I'm praying in a, in a city or a region. Literally, um, things will begin to play out in my mind, but in the prophetic realm, I can see history of that person. I can see history of that region, and in that prophetic, the Lord will show me how He has moved. But He'll also show me how the enemy has tried to come in. And when He does, and when He does that, then my discernment and prophetic oftentimes are working together. And so, you know, that's just a brief review of discernment and prophecy, but then we can learn to observe in the natural. You know, um, about, you know, like how we do spiritual mapping for cities and regions, just by. You know, looking at different areas of a city, do you want to add anything to that?
Well, a lot of those, uh, spiritual dynamics are manifested physically. And so, if you have the gift of discernment, and even if you don't, sometimes you can. Then you can learn it, you're going to see the spiritual significance of things that, that happen. So the best one I know of, and Becca may have already shared this, is the homosexual community in Houston, Texas. And so if you go to an area of Houston called Montrose, uh, that's where a lot of the homosexual community is. In the city, so my question becomes, who told them to go there? Why do they gravitate to Montrose? And if you do a little research, and, and even you discern this to understand why that happens. And this is strategic level spiritual warfare a little bit. But there is a tribe of Indians that's documented in secular history called the Karakuan Indians. These Karakuan Indians were over seven feet tall, they could hold their breath for six minutes. They emitted an odor out of their skin that was scary to the other tribes, so they wouldn't necessarily.
That demonic odor that we were just talking about. They knew how to make that happen.
Right, they were cannibals, but they were homosexuals, they only related with women for procreation. Otherwise, they were homosexuals, and it's right there in that area of Houston and Montrose. So when you discern that, walking through that area of Houston, it's not just discerning the prevailing bondage. It's for, it's discerning the root bondage, because you understand why that's going on.
And so we want, you know, so we, the Lord showed us that by discerning in the natural. How did this happen, right? This is unusual.
And then we got facts.
Yes, and so in the natural, we then did the historical studies. And then we went down and we began to pray in that region and break that stronghold of perversion and dealt with. When the Lord told us, do you need to get my book Glory Warfare and Authority to Tread, which teaches on this as well? But that's like at a city level, but the good news is, you know, that was, you know, uh, God started moving. People started getting saved, they started coming out of that lifestyle, they themselves started getting deliverance and finding Jesus. Right, so we're not doing this because we're critical. We want to see people saved, do we want to see people that are struggling in this lifestyle, know Jesus and get freedom and get deliverance? And this was a territorial issue as well.
And that's a really good point about discernment, what she just said, the point of discernment is not to control what people do. To determine what a church does or what a pastor does, the whole purpose is to see people brought to Christ. Just like the gift of wisdom, the gift of discernment, the gift of healing, the gift of prophecy, pick a, pick a gift. The whole goal is to bring people to the realization of Jesus. So that gets twisted sometimes, especially about discernment. It, if the enemy can use it, or the flesh can use it, a lot of times it's not always the enemy, the flesh can use it to control. And that's why I wanted to share the story about Becca with the pastor, because it was a point of her releasing it. You're the leader, you decide how to deal with it in the church, I'm here if you want my input. And, and so she's letting that gift go, allowing God to do whatever He wants with it.
Absolutely, and what was so awesome, we found that dream today, this is why he's telling that story. Because when we were cleaning out my prayer room closet, and I opened up the box, because it had been packed away for years in our other home. And we'd been in this place for a year and a half, but this is the first time I've gotten to all the boxes in my prayer room closet. Uh, and so, and I was like, Greg, listen to this, and I reread the dream, and I had that dream three times. And, and we, and so, we, we were, you know, reading that dream, and then we were like reminiscing about. Remember how I just finally, after the third time, I took it to the pastor and said, here. And, and I don't know what else to do with this, I have concerns, I feel like this person is coming with not good motives. And I wasn't against the person, but I couldn't deny the dream, and so I just gave it to the pastor, and they said, okay. And then a year later, it was a year later, I got a call, what was it God's fully showing you, we are seeing this now, we need your wisdom, we need your help. And I went in and met with the leaders, and then they were able to meet with this person and start helping them. And trying to bring them into a season of freedom and victory in their lives. And so, you know, um, and so even like what we were saying about, you can discern in the natural. You know, and you can even discern in the natural for individuals, this is why people do questionnaires in deliverance ministry. Doris Wagner will say, I do not have discernment, so I gotta have the questionnaire, she has more discernment than what she thinks, though. Anyway, so, but, you know, she has that questionnaire, and she has people fill out that questionnaire, which is a great starting point for her. Because she says, I need this because I don't, and so she's observing in the natural and by answers to questions. And repeated patterns, oh, this is rejection, this is a spirit of death, this is a spirit of infirmity, this is a spirit of bondage or rejection, whatever, you know, it is. And so then we even talked about discerning the angelic. Um, and so, uh, and so we, we, you know, how do you discern when the angelic activity? And Becky Albert and I did that together, because she's a seer. And, uh, we both have had many encounters with the angelic, our children have had encounters with the angelic. And so, you know, just how do you discern the angelic realm, what are the, what is the angelic sent to do for us? How are they there to help us? Sometimes, uh, uh, angels will appear in human form. I mean, I shared examples on that one that Becky and I did together about a month ago. We were in Corinth together, and shared about how an angel appeared in human form to get us out of a sticky situation in Kenya. That we were in, and how it ended up resulting in the taxi driver, uh, getting to know Jesus. Because he watched this whole supernatural thing unfold in an impossible situation that he was even intimidated in. And so, you know, just, uh, the ability to discern, uh, I saw a blue angel up at Moravian Falls, so. And so there you go, and so, you know, we can see in that angelic realm, so sometimes we see them as people, sometimes we see them in their angelic form. Uh, sometimes, you know, we'll just see shadows, you know, or lights, you know, something that, you know, is, you know, around us. Or we'll feel their presence, I hear the angelic. And, because you know, the angelic, they, they spend eternity in heaven with Jesus. And, and so when they come, they carry a presence of eternity in heaven with them. So, you know, I talk, we talked about all of that, and then discerning the demonic realm, we've already been talking about some of this through smell. Through feeling, right, uh, through hearing, through seeing. And so, um, oh, a blue angel, insight to what that represents, well, usually blue means eternal life. It means that there's great life, interestingly enough, Kimberly, we just had our Prayer Network meeting span. And, uh, my son-in-law, uh, Mark was taking pictures. And there were a couple of pictures where there was like this blue orb, like on my back, that he captured. Um, and I know that I have angels, I believe I shared that story, um, with you all in the midst of this teaching. Uh, they were assigned to me many years ago, uh, two thousand and nine. After I did some strategic prayer assignments to bring breakthrough in that region, and the Lord assigned four angels with me. So I often, if I don't see them, other people will say, you had two angels, you had four angels tonight. And so blue to me means life, it means peace, it means that they're eternal life. And so, you know, lots of times when you see that, an angel that is blue, it, it is representing the eternity. Um, you know, and that eternal realm that it comes from, and a life, lots of life, and a river of life that is flowing. And an anointing that is flowing, so I hope that, that helps you. And so, and then we've got discerning the demonic realm, we've already talked about a lot of that, and you can read that chapter. Um, you know, and you can discern terr- territorial discernment. We just talked about an example of that, right, but that we saw in the natural. But, you know, I, I shared when we did that, that, that one particular teaching, you can literally be totally fine. And, and all of a sudden, you're driving down the road on a family road trip. And, and you can be totally asleep or at peace and relaxed, and all of a sudden, you hit a place that's steeped in the occult. And you might just instantly wake up, or you instantly feel something, like you're alert in your spirit, and you begin to feel that heaviness. Well, that's territorial discernment, and I even talked about some very relative fear, anxiety. I talked about Leviathan, I think I've mentioned a little bit about Jezebel, so things like that that we're dealing with culturally, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, and she said the key word right there, culturally, uh, something I think that happens where. Uh, and, and I, I do understand, maybe I just, maybe I understand, but I don't like it. Is that we in the church, eh, when you read the Bible, Mary saw an angel. Uh, Balaam's donkey talked, uh, the Red Sea was parted, uh, lepers were healed. Um, and what I, it sounds like I'm describing is a sci-fi movie. If I think about everything that happened in the Bible, it's what Hollywood has tried to steal, and culture has tried to steal. Uh, especially in the West, but then also even with, uh, exploring other worlds. Talk about living on the moon, and living on Mars, and a rover to Mars. This idea of the supernatural or beyond natural, I guess is the way to say it, how the enemy in the flesh has stolen that. And now, if I say to a young child, do animals talk, they're going to say Shrek does, Shrek is not real. Balaam's donkey was real, I have documented evidence that that happened, because it's in the Bible, and I believe the Bible. Uh, what I'm getting to is we in the church, discernment has kind of taken a backseat. To the gift that it truly is, and I don't mean discerning aliens, I mean discerning the supernatural. Understanding what's going on spiritually, taking that gift. And using it in the church, in our prayer, or to see God accomplish things. Because the, the body of Christ is functioning without a hand. We've got this gift in people in the body to serve in discernment, and it gets rejected a lot of times. Sometimes it's the package, sometimes it's the way it's presented.
Why maturing in it is so very.
That's why maturing is so important, and sometimes it's the leadership, they just don't want to mess with that because it's too messy.
And let's get really real, we've got new age culture. Come into the world, and so that's real kind of.
And the church.
And, and, I'm just saying, and the church, but anyway, he went there, but it's true. So you've got this new age occult mentality that is steeped into our culture now through, through influences in the world. Through TV, and so then, then what happens is this gift of discernment that God has given many of us. If we, and some people in the church don't understand it, they're thinking, oh my goodness, you're just being weird, you're being kind of new age, what, what, what? You know, and so I was told, um, when I discerned a Jezebel, that they told me they did not need deliverance is Jesus. But, you know, the truth of the matter is, people do need deliverance. And, and, you know, and so that, and that's like a whole other topic as well, you know, can a Christian have a demon? Yes, a Christian can have anything they want, uh, trust me, I know, I was saved at the age of twelve, I walked in rebellion for three years as a prodigal. And I, after that, I came packing with some demons that I had to get set free from, even though I was a believer and I was saved. And so Satan does have a counterfeit, but what's happened is, some people in the church have pulled away from discernment. Because they're like, hmm, that's just too out there. So that's why I've written this book, because I really, you know, even James Gola is writing a book, he just finished it on the seeing gift. And he's tying it into discernment, there's more, and Jane Hammond wrote a great book on discernment, interesting. I did not read her book till after I wrote mine, and just because, you know, she had just come out with hers, and I wanted to make sure my content was fresh. And, you know, and I'll quote other people, but, you know, I just wanted it to be fresh. Woo, there's some really, uh, similar things, like when we talk about discerning times and season, and Isakar, and Jacob, and Leah, and Rachel, and all of that. And I've been teaching that for many years, first time I taught it was in Indonesia, many years ago, when I was with Endri Guatama at her church. But, uh, and so, but anyway, I'm like, wow, some of the revelation that she even put in the book. Um, you know, is what I have in my book as well, even some of the same scriptures, of course, probably, you know, that would be normal when you're talking about discernment. But yes, uh, T L E, we have a lot of teachings on deliverance, we've been doing deliverance now for over thirty years. So you can go to our website, christianharvestintl.org, we have Breaking the Bonds of Evil. Defeating Strongholds of the Mind, some of them are, haha, right here, uh, Let Our Children Go. Um, yeah, these are all books that I've written, Breaking the Bonds of Evil. Uh, Defeating Strongholds of the Mind, this is a great book, it takes you through self-deliverance prayers as well. Uh, and then Let Our Children Go, and so you can, um, actually go to our website. Not only do we have the books, but we have down, are they streaming? Streaming teachings that you can purchase, uh, so you can watch them over and over again, right? And those streaming teachings, you know, on those different topics as well. And so, but then we also have, like I said, discerning times and seasons, which we did that just a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, having that Isakar anointing, and that there's a time and a season for everything in our lives. And how to activate that in our lives. And to pray, what I, and I, this came out when I was interviewing with Sid. When he was interviewing me, I said, you have to pray and pay attention. So even in that chapter, we give checkmarks, like after you've prayed, and that's not an exhaustive list, it's just a good overview. Of what might begin to happen in your life, when you're saying, Lord, awaken this ability in me to understand the seasons you have me in. And even the seasons that we're in together as corporately, um, as, you know, as, uh, in the world, and as the church, yeah.
And understand too, I mean, think about if Joshua, um, when Moses struck the rock. He would have said, wait, step down, I'm going to take over, you're disobeying God, you don't know what you're doing, that would have been the wrong timing.
Well, that's what happened, though, he struck the rock, he was supposed to speak to it. The second time.
The second time, but then.
Sorry, you're meaning the first time.
What I'm getting to is the timing issue of how we release discernment. And when we're supposed to release it. And I, I think another part of this, and you can pipe into this as well, is that as you grow in that gift of discernment. You learn to die to yourself, and it becomes more and more of God and less and less of you. Because initially what happens with discernment even, as with other gifts, it's, oh, look at what God did through me, look at how He's using me. As He continues to use it, you begin to go, it's not about me. It's about what the Holy Spirit is showing me, it's how He's taking me to move, and you begin to see the big picture. The big picture's not about me, who cares if anybody knows who I am? The point is, does the body of Christ and does Jesus get lifted up through my gift of discernment? And what happens is you begin to die to who you are, so Jesus can do more and more through you with a gift of discernment. And you gain, for lack of a better term, credibility for how God uses you in that gift.
That's right, and so you just led into discerning moves of the Holy Spirit, which we talked about last week, which was, woo. The presence of the Lord was so tangible, and just that place of surrender with Him, and abiding in Him, and drawing closer. To Him, and so, you know, these, these, this is so very, very important. And, you know, this, this is like a theme, ah, message in our ministry. Because everything we do, guys, is from that place of surrender. This is how the Lord has worked in and through me from the get-go. Once, once I rededicated my life, and then, and once we became spirit-filled. It's like God has had us in this deep place of surrender, abiding with Him, obedience, and so, you know, that. And so, you know, that chapter is so very key. And then how did, when you do that, how to be awakened and to discern the moves of the Holy Spirit, just in everyday life, little nudges that he's given you to impact people. And so, you know, like what, like we said, we just kind of wanted to come and give an overview of this, this teaching that we'd done. And if you have specific questions, that you, and I know we answered some tonight, that you really would like us to take time, uh, and to answer, be sure to write those out and to email them, so we can definitely spend some time recording answers to those questions that you guys might still have. But, I don't know, you want to say something, but just really, those that didn't watch last week, go back and watch it. Go back and watch the surrender, the abiding, uh, knowing the moves of the Holy Spirit, being obedient to Him. And the truth of the matter is, the more you do this, and the more you surrender to Him and let Holy Spirit take over, the more your discernment's going to increase, because it's just a natural outflow.
So, if you do have questions, send them to info@christianharvestintl.org. Again, that's info, I N F O, at christianharvestintl.org. And you want to get those submitted to that address by Sunday at six PM Mountain Standard Time, so we can get them all together and get them answered for you.
Absolutely. And so, you know, guys, we just, we pray that this has blessed you. And obviously, we're still gonna keep doing teachings and different teachings, um, every Thursday night, and releasing this wisdom and impartation to all of you. And I just pray this has so encouraged you to, to really begin to function, and I know many of you are, but to function in this gift of discernment. Don't shrink back from it. And, and, and that it gives you permission, and it gives you wisdom, um, on how to maneuver within, uh, within this gift. When, and like I said, the closer you go to, you draw to Holy Spirit, the closer you get to Him. This is just a natural outflow. And, and I love this, this is one of the favorite things that I talked about in this book when we're studying different examples, right? Um, but like Jesus, uh, and like I said, we've been watching, we watched The Chosen, it's so good. And we're watching that scene where they're lowering the paralytic man, right? The paralyzed man from the, the, from the hole in the roof, and this, that they created, and they lowered him down. And Jesus is going to heal him, but without the Pharisee even saying a word, Jesus perceived what he was thinking, and he turned, and he spoke to him, and he confronted him based off of discernment and perceiving in the spirit realm where his thoughts were before he had even said anything. And so, you know, and, and you even gave a great example about Moses, right? The second time, the Lord told him to speak to the rock, but he didn't. He struck the rock, because he was upset and angry. See, God, the first time God told him to strike the rock, and water would come out. The second time, God told him, speak to the rock, but Moses was upset, so he was angry, and he struck it. And so, Moses missed a moment, because he didn't discern the different season that he was in, and how God had to use him in a different way, in order for them to cross the promised land. And that's when Joshua rose up. And so, guys, we just pray that this has been so helpful for you all. And, and what, do you, you just give some closing wisdom, and then I'll pray. And get those questions to us, so Greg and I can take time, and I'll definitely make time next week to record those answers for you. Um, you know, what is it, what has it been like for you with myself and our three daughters? Now, you do have discernment, it's really more in, I mean, and he does, but it's more in that wisdom realm. And so, what has it been like for you to be, to be in a house full of discerners?
We don't have that kind of time. Um, the, the thing I would say that we have to learn in the church is the validity of how the Holy Spirit moves in people's lives. And that's something that's true of discernment. Uh, and, and again, our culture, especially in the church, is so put it off to, that's just the way she is.
Careful, Greg.
That's just her personality. Oh, I lived with four women, I know what not to do.
Oh, where'd it go? I don't know if y'all can see us, hold on, we're trying to get back. Oh, where did it go? Oh, are we there? Can you see us? Woo, we came back.
So, where I was, was
Do we have a problem? We're back, we do have a problem, it tried to kick us out.
That learning to allow God to move that discernment gift in you, or whatever it is, to allow Him to use it with those around you, and to have the wisdom to know when you're supposed to use it, and when you're not, and to allow the Holy Spirit to speak to you as to when to put it out there. And this is so crucial, how to put it out there, because the body of Christ does need those with the gift of discernment. We need them desperately, but the package and the delivery, and, and that sounds harsh, because it shouldn't depend on that, but it just does, uh, at least in our culture. Until it begins to show relevance and credibility. And once it does that, then the body of Christ will respond to it. And I don't mean just pastors and leaders, I mean prayer groups, and home groups, and families, and everything else. Because it does make a difference when you listen to that discernment, and understand how God has chosen to use some people in that way.
Yeah, so sorry, guys, it tried to kick us out there, and it's probably getting a little bit, a little bit fuzzy, I don't know. Lord, we say, at least it worked all the way to the end, right? Uh, anyway, but, um, guys, we just pray this has been so helpful. Like I said, we're gonna continue doing teachings every Thursday night. You know, after we answer questions next time, you know, we'll start shifting into another, uh, teaching series, and just coming on and teaching more and more. And so, um, anyway, we love you all, we pray this has empowered you, that it has helped you. Um, and, uh, we look forward to getting those questions, so we can make sure we get those answered for you. So, I'm gonna pray, and then we are gonna go, and you guys pray for us, because we have to go finish cleaning out that closet as well. And just to finish, I have to brag on Greg.
Oh.
Just like, you know, what's it like with someone with discernment? When he was sharing that incident that happened with us earlier today, when we were cleaning the closet, he instantly knew what was happening. He said, he, I mean, how he handled that, he's like, I'm like, why do I feel this way all of a sudden, you know? And, and so, and it surprised me, because I wasn't expecting that in my prayer closet, in my prayer room. And so, he goes, well, let's just take a break and come back. And, and he said, is, are you feeling something? Are you sensing something? Do you think there's something in there? And he goes, there probably is. And so, you know, go back in, and sure enough, there it was. And so, you know, he's learned how to, uh, how, how we maneuver very well together within this, this gift mix. And, and, um, I appreciate you, thank you, you're amazing. Because I know sometimes it's challenging, anyway. So, Lord, I just thank you for everyone that is watching. Lord, I thank you for all of these that are saying, I do have this gift, and God is using this, and what about this, and what about that? Lord, I thank you, Father God, that you, uh, continue to increase this gift in them. Lord, I thank you, Father God, that just as we talked last week, that they will have beautiful encounters with you, that there will be places of surrender. Holy Spirit, we say yes to every part of, of who you say we are, and what you want to activate in us. You're the one that determines how these gifts maneuver in us, not man. And so, Lord, we say yes to you, and we say yes to the fullness, every attribute of you, Holy Spirit, and you, Heavenly Father, and Jesus. We say we want to be awakened in all of those attributes, not just a few, but all the fullness of the kingdom. So, Lord, I thank you, Father God, for this impartation and awakening to all that continue to come on to watch. And with Jesus, we give you all the glory and honor and praise for what you are doing in and through their lives, in Jesus's name, amen. Hey, David Kitchen from, from Tulsa? All right, guys, so send us those questions, and we'll get those answers recorded for you next week. God bless, see you next Thursday, bye.